Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance invocation given by our Chaplain, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the outstanding people that are here to be recognized this morning for various things. I pray that you will guide this board, staff, and stakeholders as we make decisions that are important for this county. And as always, Lord, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces. And pray every day that you will keep them safe and guide them as they move through each day with their activities. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I also been notified that Commissioner Kemp is going to be running a little late. She will be here. We have three proclamations and one accommodation this morning, so we'll start off with Commissioner
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone that's here. This is a fabulous award that we do. Dr. Massey, it's great to see you here today in regards to anti-bullying. Anti-bullying is pervasive throughout our community. It's in our schools, it's in technology, it's happening everywhere, even in the workplace. And I believe this Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee has done an outstanding job of laying out the issues and really working hard to help identify maybe a hero in the community. And, you know, just things that they can do to really help in this effort, to advertise to other kids and let them know that there's an outlet for them. It is a serious concern within our schools and the community. Victims of bullying and bullies themselves can suffer from long-term physical, emotional, and behavioral problems. Twenty-one percent of youth ages 12 to 18 report being bullied. Children who bully others are more likely to engage in violent behaviors as adults, and children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful and intimidated. Since 2009, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners has sought to curb and eliminate bullying through the creation of the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee. The thirteen voting members of the advisory committee include law enforcement officers, social workers, caretakers, children's youth groups, and other stakeholders who develop models to eliminate bullying in the community. Dr. Tom Massey has chaired this advisory board since its inception in 2009 with the specific mission of developing a comprehensive strategy to address bullying in our county. Since then, the committee has supported numerous successful interventions, community awareness efforts to address the issue. Today, Dr. Massey is here with a number of the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee members to receive a proclamation recognizing the work of the committee and its partners. And I'd like to call you all up. Dr. Massey, if you'd like to come up. Julio Grande, Rhonda Flowers, Monica Martinez, Jeannie Wilsey, Corporal Vero Raro, sorry if I mess that up, Michelle Young-Williams, Eva Dyer, and Rob Parkinson. Is Rob here? I don't see Rob yet. And so with that, I would like to read the proclamation, and it's a very long one, so I think I'll just take snippets, if that's okay. It says, "Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally and maliciously directed at a person or a group of people. Whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, increasingly includes cyberbullying, which occurs online through social media, mobile devices, other technology. Cyberbullying is pervasive threat where messages and images are posted anonymously, distributed quickly, and difficult to delete or remove once they're posted. Whereas according to United States Department of Health and Human Services, twenty-one percent of youth ages 12 to 18 report being bullied, and twelve percent reported experiencing cyberbullying make them more likely to acquire physical and emotional scars and increasing their risk of suicide. Whereas the committee's work has led to a number of countywide bullying prevention efforts, including the Bully Busters Program in the schools, the ALWAS Bowling Prevention Program, development of fifteen students against violence everywhere, that's the SAVE program, school-based clubs, coordination of anti-bullying town hall meetings, executing a year-long cyberbullying awareness campaign, implementing the county's annual Anti-Bullying Recognition Award, collaborating with the Innovative Theater to support community anti-bullying lunch and learns and talkback sessions. Whereas the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee continues to partner with stakeholders, including the Hillsborough County School District, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Tampa Police Department, and the county's robust social services and prevention provider network to present a unified front against bullying. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare October 2019 as Bullying Prevention Month in Hillsborough County, urges all residents to make the community safer for young people by taking a stand against bullying." And of course, it's signed by all seven county commissioners. I'm so pleased to give this to you, and I'd like to ask you if you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. I simply want to thank Commissioner Merman and of course, the entire Board of County Commissioners for their support of this committee. And as Commissioner Merman mentioned, it started in 2009, so that's fully ten years. And it's interesting, some folks may feel like that that's indicative of something that, well, it should all be solved, but of course, that's not true. Bullying is something that's pervasive, it happens all the time, it's continuing. Unfortunately, I think I saw an article in the newspaper just last week where a young person committed suicide after bullying. So this is something that does continue to happen, and it does require us to continually think about ways to address the issue, to inform our students, our parents, members of the community about how to address bullying, how to educate folks to better deal with it. And again, just thanks to Commissioner Merman and the entire Board of County Commissioners for the support of this effort, and I think it makes the county better.
It does, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Massey, you've been with us since 2009, so you have a ten-year anniversary. And I know how personally committed you are to this effort, and I really thank you. We are now going to recognize this year's winner of the Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. And that award is being given to Jamal Jackson. Okay, didn't want to butcher his name because it is not spelled that way on the paper. He is seventeen years old, and he was nominated by a member of the community, Mr. James Ferguson, who works at the Disabled American Veterans Department at James Haley Veterans Hospital. His attention was captured as he witnessed Jamal Jackson's, that's right, right? Jamal?
Najari.
Najari. Okay, I know we'll get this right.
So that's my fault.
I apologize, okay. He gave me bad information. Has been recognized on the local, state, and federal level for his initiatives, leadership, and service to others. His awards include Eagle Scout, a Congressional Award, multiple Carson Scholar Awards, Prudential Spirit of Community Award, our very own Hillsborough County Yay Award, and most recently, an Honorary ESPY Award in July. Yes, he is a standout athlete also. And at the young age of seventeen, Najari has achieved milestones which many only hope to achieve. Among his passions is the desire to stand up for others who feel bullied because they may look different or don't fit in. Najari lends his voice of advocacy through powerfully written messages. He has published four books to date? Four books? You've written four books? Wow. One of his books is a depiction of what kids go through when battling adult-sized diseases from diagnosis through treatment, and all the emotions that occur in between. Najari was inspired to write this book because he had been diagnosed with autoimmune disorder and juvenile arthritis, and has needed periodic doses of chemotherapy and immunotherapy to combat these diseases. He knows what it's like to be different and to be confronted with adverse comments when facing crisis. As a senior, Najari witnessed his close friend being bullied, and entered a poem he wrote entitled, "Wendell Be Great." He entered this poem in an essay contest sponsored by a doctor as an anti-bullying initiative. And when Najari was selected as the winner, he donated the prize of free orthodi treatment to his friend. When the orthodontist heard of this selfless gift, he provided Najari with an Invisalign treatment as a thank you for his bravery and humility. As Najari wrote, "Never give up on yourself or a friend. When you see a classmate struggling to find their voice, it's okay to be kind. Use your voice, you have a choice." Today, we recognize an exceptional young man who just begun his college experience. We could not be prouder of your accomplishments and your positive example of what one youth can do in our community. He epitomizes the reason we are here to recognize youth leadership. He stands up tirelessly and honorably on behalf of others. And I understand this must be your mother, taking the proud video. Why don't you come on up? And Najari, would you like to say a few words? And I'd like to present this award to you.
Thank you. I'm gonna be honest, I didn't know I was getting an award. My mom told me that there was a really important meeting I had to go to with her, and that she wanted me to go, so I came from Gainesville to go with her. Not to sound ungrateful, but I really feel like I shouldn't be getting an award. I mean, I don't, you know, do things like this for accolades or praise or anything like that, I just do it because, you know, it's the right thing to do. And, you know, I know what it's like to be, you know, bullied or picked on, and I see people going through it too, and then you hear stories about kids killing themselves because someone makes fun of their hair or something like that. And it's just like, I feel like it's just harder to be mean than it is to be nice. Like, you know, you want everyone to, you know, be nice to you, or like you, or make you feel good, so I feel like if everyone reciprocated that energy or mindset, you know, the world would be completely different than how it is now. And I just feel like, you know, everybody needs somebody, you know? Some people don't like to admit it, some people may be, you know, antisocial or scared or anything like that, but everybody needs somebody. So I feel like just be somebody, somebody, you know what I mean? And I just want to thank you all, you know, I don't think my mom, she's definitely raised me right, you know? I wouldn't be where I am without her, and, you know, I just want to thank you all for this opportunity.
Wow, what a young man. We're gonna step back here.
Commissioner Merman, before we do that, we also wanted to cue Commissioner White, you recognize.
Absolutely.
I just feel compelled to say that the words that were read into the record speak for themselves, but the way I can really tell that you're a fine young man is that you said, "My mom said that I have an important meeting to get to, and I came down from Gainesville to make sure I was here." So, good job and great job on raising a fine, outstanding man.
She called me, I was like, "Are you here?"
Absolutely. I honed in on that. Good job.
That's great.
Najari, what school, you go to school in Gainesville?
Yes, I go to University of Florida.
Yeah, same. Come on, let's take a picture.
Congratulations.
Rob, where's Rob?
Congratulations.
Park is so proud of you. You're one of our heroes.
Has a lot of Gator tie.
Love that tie, by the way.
Mom? Do you need to get by your side? Okay, a little tighter, that'd be easy, you have to, yeah. Oh, is he ready? Do you still want to do that?
Sure.
Okay, we have another surprise for you, Najari. We weren't sure this individual was coming, but I'd like to introduce this man from AmeriFries who'd like to present something to you.
Najari, thanks for all you do, for everybody around you, trying to make the world a better place, and being somebody, somebody. I'm gonna steal that line, if you don't mind. It's my pleasure to present to you a little gift and thank, a scholarship appreciation for what you do for everybody, and to present the second annual Anti-Bullying Award. Thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you very much, and thanks for all you do, and we also have a little plaque for you too. You make a difference. Thank you. Thank you all.
I'm going to shift the agenda around a little bit. I'm gonna ask Commissioner White to present his proclamation at this particular point in time.
It was a distinct honor to be asked to present this proclamation. It's going to recognize emergency nurses. And as a healthcare professional, as many of you know, I'm a pharmacist professionally. I've had the opportunity to work with many nurses firsthand throughout the years and truly recognize what a tremendous asset they are to the healthcare team. So at this point, I would like to invite some special guests to the podium. I'm gonna read off all the names that I have here. I understand that some may be in attendance, some may not. But first, I'd like to call up Michael Zimmerman, Director of Emergency Services and Emergency Preparedness for South Bay Hospital, Dan Bender, CEO of South Bay Hospital, Marcy Frazina, CNO of South Bay Hospital, Maria Wheeler, who's an ER charge nurse, Christina Puertas, who's the ER manager, Liz Kern, the ER staff nurse, and if he's here, Chief Mike Bardell with the Sun City Center Emergency Squad. Didn't see him out there. And this proclamation really speaks for itself, so I'd like to read it into the record. It reads, "Whereas throughout the United States, there are approximately 167,000 emergency nurses who have expertise in caring for all emergency patients across the spectrum of the lifespan, from ushering in life at birth to allowing for a dignified death. And whereas emergency nurses are highly trained to recognize life-threatening problems and solve them on the spot, playing a vital role in treating patients in emergency situations, caring for those most in need, and saving lives on a daily basis. And whereas these qualities provide a broad scope of practice for the delivery of critical and complex care within a limited timeframe to healthcare consumers of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas emergency nurses integrate critical thinking skills and knowledge of evidence-based practice into their delivery of care and decision-making. And whereas through research, education, and emergency nursing advocacy, the Emergency Nurses Association supports and honors the advancement of professionalism of emergency nurses everywhere. And whereas the Emergency Nurses Association, the Emergency Nurses Association Foundation, and other groups across the nation join together to honor the extraordinary acts of service, compassion, and commitment that emergency nurses provide to patients every day. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare October 6th through October 12th, 2019, as Emergency Nurses Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages residents and visitors to take the time to thank emergency nurses for their hard work, dedication, and unwavering commitment to emergency care." Dated today, the 2nd of October, signed by the members of the county commission. It's my understanding that Mr. Bender, the CEO of South Bay, would like to say a few words, but before you come up, as this proclamation says, you know, we should be thanking our emergency nurses. So I'd like to start by giving you my heartfelt thank you to these fine nurses and to the administration that supports them so finely every day. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I'm very privileged and honored to receive this on behalf of our emergency nurses team. As you said, you know, it's a very important thing that we provide to the county, and we are very honored and humbled to accept this on that behalf. So again, thank you again.
Absolutely. I'll present this to you up here, and we'll do a picture. All right, I'm gonna probably get right. And who's gonna accept this?
I just want to say thank you also. I was raised by a nurse that ended up being head nurse and was always in the ER. The work that you do is so critically important, and how you interact with the families to help them deal with the fact that they've got someone in trauma, as a mother of someone with sustained catastrophic injury. The work that you do and the hope that you provide for families is priceless. So thank you so much for all that you do for our community. You're the glue that holds us together when we're in trouble. So thank you so much for the work you do.
We all know that the Tampa Bay Rays are in the playoffs, and we hope that they make it all the way, but we have national champions right here in the chamber today. And I was gonna present this proclamation, but in a sense of collegiality, I'm gonna ask Mr. Baseball, Commissioner Hagan, to present the proclamation. Accommodation, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for being so kind, but it is a real thrill for me to present this next accommodation, recognizing the University of Tampa baseball team on their eighth national championship. And I say that not because, as Commissioner Miller said, that I am a big baseball fan, but I also am, I went to graduate school at University of Tampa, and I'm good friends with the head coach, Joe Urso, so this is a thrill for me. This time, I'd like to invite up Coach Urso, Associate Head Coach Sam Milatello, Assistant Coach Jose Jimenez, and the players that you have, please come on up and join me. Accommodation reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is proud to recognize the University of Tampa baseball team for winning its eighth national championship in Division II of the National Collegiate Athletic Association, the second most in division history. A longtime college baseball powerhouse, the University of Tampa has a storied history that includes developing major league baseball players, Tino Martinez, Ozzie Timmons, and Sam Milatello. Led by head coach Joe Urso, a former star second baseman who helped the Spartans win the 1992 national title. UTU stellar pitching and timely hitting to defeat top seed Colorado Mesa, 3 to 1, on June 8th to win the 2019 Division II championship. The Spartans won an incredible 9-0 postseason play and finished the year with a tremendous record of 45 wins and 14 losses. The national title is the fifth NCAA championship under Coach Urso since 2006, further cementing the school status as a perennial championship contender and elite program that is a source of pride for all of Hillsborough County. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the national champion University of Tampa Spartans for once again reaching the pinnacle of NCAA Division II baseball, and wishes the program continued success, awarded the second day of October 2019, signed by all seven of the Board of County Commissioners." Before I present this to Coach Urso, I just want to say, the words in here couldn't be any more accurate. Powerhouse, perennial, this team is unbelievable. Winning eight titles, technically Division II, I can tell you right now, these guys can beat most Division I baseball teams, and I say that from experience, because years ago, when I played at University of Florida, they came up and kicked our butt in Gainesville. So this is an unbelievable team, I'm so proud of Coach, and every year, they have a number of players that get drafted, but they do, Coach has a fantastic job, not only teaching them baseball on the field, but also some of life's greatest lessons. And you look at these guys, these are monsters. I mean, they're huge, and they keep getting bigger and better, and I'm so proud of them, and Coach, great job, and please say a few words.
Commissioner Hagan, thank you very much. Board of Commissioners, thank you for recognizing us today. A lot of our teams had morning class, so they're not all here to be recognized, but, you know, we just take a lot of pride in this baseball program. Many of you drive by, you see the beautiful campus that President Vaughn has built for us, but it's about the alums on this coaching staff. It starts with Sam Milatello, Jose Jimenez, and myself as alums. We just take so much pride in what we do and trying to bring championships to our university. Obviously, it started with Tino Martinez when he came as a player, but this group of guys, they know our expectations each year is to win a championship, and they work hard and take pride in that for us. This group overcame a lot this year. We had lost first two games of the season, we also had a four-game losing streak right there in the middle of the season, so we didn't know really what to expect and that this would be a championship group, but off the field, we knew we had something special. Around the holiday times, they put ten families, they furnished their homes for the holidays. So a lot of what they did off the field, we knew we were building something special with the chemistry. And they over, we had two extra inning ballgames in the regional and super regionals to get us to the World Series. We had two come-from-behind victories in the World Series, including that final game, getting a big hit in the seventh by Yorvist Toriaba to put us up. And then this group to get that eighth national title back home to Tampa was real important, and now these returners know that we were chasing down history now for sure with trying to get that ninth one. Florida Southern has nine titles, so once we get that, it'll be the most championships of any Division II program. So hopefully, we can bring another title back, but thank you for recognizing us today.
Having been born here in Tampa and grown up in Ebor City, as a little boy, my next-door neighbor's name was Luis Sasra, and his wife's name was Genevieve, and they came from Cuba. And that's where we learned to eat tons of Spanish food. And that's where we learned to eat tons of Spanish food, next door to him. And also, the greatest thing he had as a child was papayas. Loved them. So it is an honor for me to present this Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. I'm gonna call up Ellie Rodriguez. She wrote a script for it, so I better follow it. Good morning. So it's an honor for me to present this proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. It reads, "Whereas, one of the greatest treasures of the United States is the diversity of its people, the Hispanic Americans are an intricate part of this nation, and whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, more than 58 million Hispanic Americans live in the United States, the nation's largest minority ethnic group, with more than 5 million in Florida and over 410,000 in Hillsborough County, over 29% of the county's population. And whereas, a vibrant Hispanic influence can be seen in all aspects of American life and culture, including the arts, science, business world, academia, the United States' Armed Forces, athletics, and government. And whereas, Hispanic Americans' contributions have enriched the country's heritage and helped establish the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity, illustrating all at its best about the nation. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Week was commenced under President Lyndon Johnson in 1968 to pay tribute to Hispanic Americans, and was broadened by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the achievement of Hispanic Americans and recognizes the numbers contributed of local Hispanic American leaders who have positively impacted Hillsborough County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 15th through October 15th, 2019, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate the numerous contributions of Hispanic Americans to this nation, state, and Hillsborough County executed the second day of October 2019, assigned by all county commissioners."
Thank you, Chairman Miller. And on the members of the Board of County Commissioners, at this time, I would like to recognize just a few leaders that make the effort every day to make life better, not only for Hispanic, the Hispanic community, but for the community as a whole, and to help keep Hispanic heritage alive here in Hillsborough County. Representing Puerto Rico is Diane Cortez Rodriguez, President of the Tampa Hispanic Chamber of Commerce; Luis Lara Cuente, President of Maximus Strategies and a newly appointed member of the Diversity Advisory Council. Representing Cuba, Roberto Pisano, former political prisoner of 18-plus years and a lifelong advocate of democracy and human rights; and his son Rafael Pisano, U.S. Army Veteran and First Responder for the city of Tampa; and Marilyn Alvarez, Hillsborough County Sheriff's Deputy and Community Liaison to the Hispanic community. Representing Venezuela, Javier Torres, President Emeritus Casa Venezuela Tampa Bay and a fantastic immigration attorney, may I add. Carrie and Carlos Carrasco formed the Carlos Cookie Carrasco's Children Foundation to help children reward academic achievement and adopt healthier lifestyles. And if not anyone noticed, Mr. Carrasco is also a pitcher for the Cleveland Indians. Representing Colombia, Catalina Botera, President of Hispanic Professional Women's Association; and Joa Rodriguez, Executive Board Member for the Hispanic Professional Women's Association. Presenting, excuse me, representing Mexico, Monica Rodriguez, President of the Latino Coalition of Tampa Bay and a Board Member of the Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council; and Angelica Ibarra, Executive Director of Achieve Plant City. And finally, representing the Dominican Republic, is Enrique Carrera, Professor, Community Advocate, and Hispanic Small Business Owner, and his wife Rosa Cabrera. Please come up. And now I'd like to introduce, or I already introduced to you, is Marilyn Alvarez, who will speak on behalf of the group.
Good morning. It's such an honor for me today to be able to speak on behalf of these amazing, hard-working Hispanic community leaders. Day in and day out, they go out and work hard, not only just for our Hispanic community, but for our entire community. And on behalf of myself and all of them, we want to thank Chairman Miller and all of the county commissioners for everything you do for our Hispanic community and for this proclamation today. Thank you.
Chairman Miller, before we do the picture, Commissioner Smith would like to comment.
Yes, I would like to comment. I'm half Hispanic myself. My mother was Cuban, and I grew up with a family speaking what we call Spanglish, just choosing Spanish words and English words interchangeably in their sentences. I grew up eating and loving Cuban food, and with all that culture, and I just feel very strongly that the Hispanic culture is part of what makes Tampa Tampa and really enriches us all. So, thank you for your leadership very much. Thanks for being here today.
Excuse me, yes, Commissioners, we have just a couple of changes. We have one off-the-agenda item from Commissioner White, that's Item F4. Advertise and set a first public hearing for October 16th, 2019 at 10:00 a.m., and a second public hearing for November 6th, 2019 at 10:00 a.m., to consider enacting an ordinance providing for a moratorium for rezonings and planned development zoning modifications within the residential planned 2, RP2, future land use designation category of the comp plan. We have one deferral, that's Item B6, which was a budget amendment to appropriate $13 million from the rate stabilization fund for the utility system, general fund, general revenue fund. We have no items removed from consent for discussion or highlighting. We have just a few time certens for public hearings. D1, public hearing except comments on the proposed substantial amendments to the county's annual action plans required by HUD. D2 is public hearing considering the enactment of an ordinance amending the Hillsborough County Emergency Management Ordinance to include the Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board as a member of the emergency policy group. D3 is the first of two required public hearings entering to school concurrency proportionate share agreement with the school board and Ridgewood LLC. And D4, another school concurrency proportionate share agreement, first of two required public hearings for an agreement with the school board and Bel Air Capital Group LLC. Final time certain is 10:15. That's Commissioner Hagan's item, directing the county attorney to bring back recommendations to strengthen the county's pet retail ordinance. Those are the changes.
Motion, Commissioner White, sent by Commissioner Murman, to approve the changes to the agenda, seeing a further discussion, please report your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Excuse me, now moving to public comment, excuse me. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, as requested at the same time when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the Board during the public comments portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the Boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes are allowed for each speaker, and there's a time clock on the dais there. When it gets to y'all, that means you have 30 seconds left to speak. Our first speaker is Joanne O'Brien, followed by Bill Barrett. Ms. O'Brien?
I'm a citizen of this county, and I believe we need more rules and regulations. It's too easy for people to come into this county in order to, you know, do their breeding with these puppy mills, and once we see less pit bulls in that shelter, then maybe I'll be okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Barrett, followed by Judy Seltrich, Selrich, I messed that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Bill Barrett, resident of Carrollwood. Normally, I'm here and I talk to you about parks issues or youth issues. Today, I'm here on Item A1 on the agenda, which is the backup documentation being provided to the Board and the general public at least 24 hours before your meeting. Excellent idea. Should have been done a long time ago across government and the state. The one thing that I would like to bring to your attention is, I'd like to see that to be done with all the Boards in Hillsborough County, because, for instance, while you all are debating doing this and making this requirement, just last month, the Parks and Rec Board took this requirement out of their bylaws and said they are not providing the documentation to the public anymore. So, this is very good for people like me. I mean, yesterday's NPO meeting, you brought it up and said, "We want to make sure that the public can see this." Okay, I watch your meetings, and I try and be an informed citizen, but if I can't see this until I walk into the meeting, it doesn't matter whether it's your meeting or a Parks and Rec meeting, I'm at a severe disadvantage as a citizen trying to be informed and trying to make my voice heard. So, great policy. I'm glad you all are doing this. I would love to see this put to all the Boards in the county, and I thank you all very much for your time this morning.
Thank you, sir. Judy, is it Skelrich?
Selrich.
Followed by Mike Lampera?
Do I start now? Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Judy Seltrich, and I am the Chair of the Animal Advisory Committee. I wanted to also let you know that I am the Vice President of the Florida Association of Kennel Clubs, and on the national level, I am a Florida Director of the National Animal Interest Alliance, which deals with animal welfare. I'd like to speak to you because last week, I was absolutely sick about what happened on the seizure of animals. I don't think that there is anything that we could have done in the pet store ordinance to have prevented something that has been going on for years. I've lived here since 1972, and the individuals associated have been a problem since that time. Hillsborough County did have in place an ordinance, 00-26, amended 03-8, pages 15, 16, and 17, which had to do with permitting. I believe that permitting would have done something to stop this. I represent people who are exhibitors and people who preserve the breeds that we have, and it just shamed me that the only thing that we heard was breeders, 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 because this is not what good breeders are about. In the bigger picture, what we find is that, according to the CDC, there are 1.6 million dogs that are being imported to the United States illegally, and it is for underground internet sales and for retail rescue. If we continue to do things locally, we will stymie what the farm bill that was passed in November of 2018 is trying to do, and that is trying to stop the illegal importation of animals. We have puppies that are being brought in that do not have their milk teeth, their eyes are not open. This happens at around two to three weeks old, and we are finding that these animals are coming into Florida. In June, I had the opportunity to be in Washington and speak with Representative Spano. He is very, very big on human trafficking, and I can tell you that the problem that we have in dogs is happening also in Florida. If we're third in the nation for human trafficking, we are there with dogs, and if we're looking at something, we need to look at the big picture and prevent those things so that our animals in our shelter are not being euthanized and displaced by dogs that are being imported, bringing in diseases that we have not had within the United States. We have 20 Golden Retrievers that came from Istanbul that were supposed to be street dogs. You don't have 20 purebred dogs that are running the streets in Istanbul. They're coming for retail sales. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Lampera, followed by David McAllister.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Mike Lamprea from Puppies Tampa. Just wanted to come in this morning for the obvious reason, I saw the news reports this week on the issue with this unregulated kennel and unregulated breeders in our county just in general. Two points just to make for you guys this morning. One of them is, several years ago, when we were going through a retail pet sales ordinance in several subcommittees, as the stores that have been in this industry for 15-plus years, we raised several times that there needed to also be focus on people within the county selling to people within the county, meaning breeding and large-scale kennels, and there was no type of verbiage put into that ordinance for kennels or breeding facilities. So they were basically completely omitted, and I feel like in this matter that came up this week, that kind of handcuffed the PRC from being able to administer what they thought was the proper course of action. So, to end the first part of my comments here, in terms of federal guidelines in the Animal Welfare Act, this is the entire federal book that has enforceability to it. That kennel, that I can tell, was in violation of almost every single section and subsection of that act, and so what that means is, we already have the federal code that's already pre-written. I'd like to get this into the hands of the county attorney so that they can look at it and align the county, anything that we do forward from here with county code to be with the federal code, so that it's enforceable and it makes sense from federal to state to county. Section 2, and so I don't know how to get this into the right hands, but this is probably... Okay, I'll hand it to you. Part 2 of this is, again, as businesses that have been here for a very long time, we also can be a help to the county. If you guys ever need something, if the PRC needs something, reach out to us. The PRC's been busy, so they can, and I understand that, but, you know, we noticed that they had a very large list of items that they needed on Amazon as a wish list to help the intake and process of these dogs. It was several hundred items, it was a $3,000 to $5,000 bill. As an example of how we can help the county, our business in the last day stepped in and cleared the entire order list. We bought the entire thing, we're sending everything to the PRC starting tomorrow and throughout the course of this week. So, everything that was on that list, Puppies Tampa just bought and sent over to PRC, and if anything else populates on that, we'll clear that as well to help out. I want to use that as an example, that if you need help from pet stores, you can ask us, and we have the resources to help you out, whether it's helping animals get adopted or clear just basic needs. We'd like to avoid you having to appropriate more funds back to the PRC because someone created a headache for them. You can reach out to us, and maybe we can do something to help you guys out. Thank you.
Thank you. David McAllister, followed by David Wilson.
David McAllister, as you know, I come here to advocate for an appreciation for local history and veterans, especially of the period of the War Between the States. Today, the anti-bullying proclamation kind of reminded me of the meetings in this room when those who were developing the Confederate Memorial Park here in Tampa were themselves bullied by certain county commissioners, none of y'all, until the county attorney basically told them to back off. And also, a, shall we say, poorly informed woman shook a noose at us in this room, which is very much against state law. I think maybe the video of that is still up on YouTube. The Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation gives me a chance to recognize the contributions of Hispanics to the defense of Florida in the War Between the States and to the Confederate States of America in general. There's a plaque honoring Hispanic Confederates at Confederate Memorial Park, along with Jewish Confederates, Black Confederates, the War on Civilians, POWs, and other historical plaques. There is more there than just a giant flag. It's a genuine historical tourism attraction and veterans memorial. It also features, that plaque does, one of our favorite sons here, Joseph Robles, who was... was, who served in the Seminole Wars and in the War Between the States and sent three sons to the war, one of whom, Michael, died in Confederate service as a prisoner of war of the Yankees. This is the sort of man and his family who erected the Memorial in Eternum Monument here in 1911, which used to be at the Courthouse Annex, but thanks to the board accounting commissioners caving in to the strident voices of hate and anti-Americanism, including Antifa and Black Lives Matter and the Maoist Coalition and various communists, got moved to Brandon, where it's behind a locked fence, where also no parking. Well, Mr. Robles not only mentioned there, but is also honored in Hillsborough County on a historical marker near the Courtney Campbell Causeway, where he was in charge of Assault Works and by himself captured a raiding party of Yankees and marched them to Fort Brooke. This is just to point out that the legacy of the Confederacy, even locally, even just in Hillsborough County, is one of inclusion and appreciation for all of its citizens. I just wanted to add that I was happy to represent the Spanish homeland and all folks from the Idubarian Peninsula as the Northern and Southern European representative on the Diversity Advisory Council. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I just have a cover letter to give to the board members. I was told you can pass that for me essentially. Again, my name is David Wilson. I reside in District 3 in the Magnolia Park area. First and foremost, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your years of service. I know we differ on certain issues, but I can look back and say you definitely treated us well, so thank you. Here today to speak to you about my application for the Land Use Appeals Board. Unfortunately for you all, I'm not really much of a smooth talker, so we're all going to stumble through this together. So, a little bit about myself, I was a former chairman for the NPO Citizen Advisory Committee. I consider my greatest accomplishment with fostering an environment that allowed people to express themselves positively, safely, and respectfully. I served on many boards as far as the Affordable Housing Advisory Board as well. And I just hope to leverage my experience, where I currently act as a builder slash developer. I'm a land analyst with Meritage Homes. Although, I know development is definitely a topic around here, I can tell you at the very least, I don't take the hard projects. So, recently, Providence and Bloomingdale, about 64, 50 wide lots, small community. And I think the members of the community just definitely enjoy it. So, and I hope to leverage my experiences so far within the county, my professional experiences in serving the community on the Land Use Appeals Board and hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's our last speaker. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve the consent agenda, seeing no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Murrow, we have about five minutes. That clock is wrong, so pay attention to that one over there.
Yep. No, we do have a few minutes, so we'll take B1 on the regular agenda. That's the issue concerning vaping devices.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Johnston County Attorney's Office. We've submitted a draft of a vaping ordinance for the board as directed, and we're asking the board to schedule a public hearing for it for October 16.
Commissioner Murman, you want to elaborate on that?
Thank you very much. Yes, I'll move to schedule the public hearing and just to even give you more reasons why this is an important issue for this county to address, because we can't wait for the legislature to take action. That could be forever. But, anyway, our teens across the state who have become addicted to nicotine through e-cigarettes are experiencing serious health issues as a result. We have, according to the Department of Health in Hillsborough County, the vaping cases in Hillsborough total 13 that they know of right now, because the cases have to be confirmed through the CDC. 10 confirmed and three are under investigation, and there are 49 cases statewide. I did not have this information when I brought the item forward last time. But, just the reasons why, 25% of our high school students are reported current use of electronic vaping, 58% increase. April, the Florida Department of Health Bureau of Tobacco-Free Florida launched a statewide campaign to give parents and educators the latest facts. While the law says someone must be 18 to buy e-cigarettes, that hasn't stopped young people from buying them. In fact, Good Morning America this morning had a big piece on that, where they sent undercover cops into, you know, several convenience stores posing as they were under age 18, and they were able to successfully buy e-cigarettes. So, the only thing in the ordinance that I would like to regulate, now, I think we just need to let the ordinance come back to us and we can make a change. But, I do think the flavored cigarettes is what is really making the kids increase. Every state, almost every major city is addressing this issue right now. It's like all over the place. But, most of them are focusing on the flavored cigarettes. Now, granted, it does invite lawsuits, and that was brought up in the Good Morning America piece this morning. In almost every case where they have flavored cigarettes, that, where they are banning them, they are having a lawsuit. I'm not afraid of lawsuits. Paul Johnson and I talked about this, as did Christine Beck. So, I think we should let this ordinance sit the way it is right now when it comes back to us for the public hearing. I would like to include the flavored cigarettes, but let's just see how it goes. I do think it's important for us to address what is really attracting these kids to buy the e-cigarettes, and that is flavors. So, you know, the sheriff's office has got a great campaign, Put Down the Pen campaign. You all know how campaigns work with kids. It's just kind of in one ear and out the other, you know, outside, out of mind. So, I think we've really got to, we've got some really good, strong language in here. And I know there is more we can do, but by regulating the sale, the use, and possession of vaping devices and vaping products by persons under 21 in Hillsborough County, we will be saving lives. It's just, we'll be up to this board if we decide to do the flavored cigarettes. And so, we'll wait and see how this ordinance shakes out. I'm kind of surprised our governor hasn't really taken an action. Several governors, 13 states have already banned them. So, I think, but I don't want to wait. I'd rather have something on the books right now and start to regulate it and help save our kids' lives. So, my motion is to do the public hearing. Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to approve item B1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Murrow.
All right. I think we're just about at 10 o'clock, so we can begin our public hearings with item
Good morning.
Good morning.
Willalet Hollinger, Planning and Reporting Manager for, standing in for Cheryl Howell, Director of Affordable Housing. The recommendation is for D1 to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed substantial amendment to program years 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18 annual action plans as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in connection with grant-funded projects. Close the public comment period that started on August 21, 2019. Adopt the substantial amendment to program years 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18's action plans in the sum of $1,470,994.24, and submit them for HUD. Authorize into the Chair or County Administrator to execute further documentation, forms, and agreements related to those documents as needed and that are approved by the county's Attorney's Office. These requested amendments are to reprogram the unspent funds from five projects that have failed to move forward to set, to a new set of eight projects better positioned to move forward in the compliance with HUD expenditure deadlines.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D1? Anyone wishing to address item D1? Close the public hearing. Have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you for this. I really appreciate it. Please give Ms. Howell a big get well. The really, what's wonderful about our Affordable Housing Department is that they are flexible enough to find the best opportunity to get things done. And making these changes has allowed projects that were ready to go to move forward, and I'm very proud of this report going up to HUD. That's all I wanted to say.
We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item D1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Murrow.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Johnston County Attorney's Office. Commissioners, this is a public hearing to amend our emergency management ordinance to include the Chair of the Hillsborough County Public Schools as a member of the Emergency Policy Group. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D2?
Good afternoon. Well, good morning, Commissioners. Gerald Wine, Hillsborough County Community Activist. Well, you guys look great this morning. I'm here for the Emergency Policy Group, which is one of the most important bodies in Hillsborough County during a crisis, during an emergency. I support the School Board Chair being a voting member of the Emergency Policy Group. Although, we have yet to resolve the issue, and there's a real conflict between the Policy Group and the Mayor of Tampa, I still think that need to be worked on, who's running what, who's in control of what, when there's a crisis, looking for complete unity. And I hope the School Board Chair will bring some sort of peace when there's a crisis in Hillsborough County. Of course, we know the County Administrator is responsible for carrying out the duties during a crisis on behalf of the Emergency Policy Group. But, it's a very, very important body, and I'm surprised, I can't believe we hadn't even thought of that in the past, to have, as citizens, to have the School Board member a part of the Policy Group. I support it. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it would help move things along during an event of a crisis, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Let me explain, let me clarify something to you. The Florida statute states that any evacuations are called by the County Administrator, not the mayors of any cities. So, I think we have a clear understanding of that with all mayors at this particular point in time. That direction falls under the County Administrator. It's in Florida statute. Somebody made a mistake a while back, we're not going to have a problem anymore.
Okay, very, that's good to hear. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to address item D2? Have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item D2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Commissioner Overman? Motion carried six to zero.
Murrow.
Public Hearing D3.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D3 is the first of two required public hearings to consider a proportionate share agreement for school concurrency amongst the County, Board of County, sorry, School Board and Ridgewood LLC. This is to provide for 17 elementary student seats and 12 high school student seats for the Rodine Road West subdivision. The agreement will call for a contribution of $863,568 that will be applied to create a room for the, for the high school and elementary school students. It did include some additional information in the background of this item to respond to a question that was raised the last hearing about where the, where the students will be assigned. Essentially, the, the students assigned to these schools, or these schools will satisfy concurrency for the project. However, the School, the School Board may redistrict and change districts to accommodate the proximity of students to school, so the students may end up going to different schools.
This is the first of two public hearings. Anyone wishing to address item D3? Anyone wishing to address item D3? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. It will come back October 16. Mr. Murrow.
D4 as well.
Commissioners, Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D4 is a public hearing to, first public hearing to consider a school proportionate share, school concurrency mitigation agreement. This is for the, this is between Hillsborough County, the School Board, and Bel Air Capital Group. This is to accommodate the LJ Lane subdivision and a contribution of $353,156 to provide for 13 middle school seats at the middle school, high school, TTT.
This is the first of two public hearings. Anyone wishing to address item D4? Anyone wishing to address item D4? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, Commissioners. I just want to take this opportunity to point out something about this development that only comes to light at this stage. When we approved it back in February, we approved it for 117 units in Ruskin. It's a, it's a six-per-acre site. And part of infill in our comp plan is that we should achieve a certain density within the urban service area boundary in places like this. And so, we approved it for 117 units, which the Planning Commission reviewed and said that would meet the intent of our policy for infill in the urban service area. And in fact, they said at 25 acres, six dwelling units per acre, the applicant would need to build 112 units to meet the intent. So, we approved it, they approved it. Now, it's the first time we see the, if you really dig into the weeds, the preliminary plat, and it turns out that the development is only 107 units. So, I'm going to, you know, support this when it comes back the second hearing. I just wanted to point out that as we're trying to do infill and stop sprawl, sometimes we think we're achieving the intent of the comp plan, but when it comes finally to plating, they're not, they're not bringing us the same density that we had, that the comp plan actually calls for in the development.
This is the first of two public hearings. It will come back October 16. Thank you. Mr. Murrow.
Final time certain is F1, which is Commissioner Hagan's item.
We waive the rules? Any objection to waiving the rules? Okay.
Oh, right.
Objection. Mr. Murrow. Mr. Mur, Mr. Mur, Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's kind of looking like.
I don't know about that, but, Board members, we've all heard the stories involving our pet resources and the seizure of 350 dogs from deplorable conditions in Hillsborough County. Sadly, this case has churned for over 20 years and could very well have impacted the lives of thousands of animals over that time. Back in the spring of 2017, I brought to the BOCC my grave concerns over the mistreatment of animals by irresponsible and greed-driven breeders, known as puppy mills, and retailers that all too often turn a blind eye to their appealing practices. I want to stress that I'm not talking about all breeders, only those that are irresponsible. For those of you that were not, that were here at the time, you'll recall that there was much discussion and numerous modifications. But, at the end, the board voted unanimously in favor of a pet retail sales ordinance joining over 200 jurisdictions who have enacted similar ordinances. While I was happy that we were able to get something on the books, I couldn't cheer too much knowing how, how much more we could have done and how much was lost due to compromise. I feel compelled by recent events to ask that we reexamine the ordinance and determine if there are improvements that can be made and eliminate any loopholes that may exist. And I'm speaking specifically of the issue of puppy mills. In a moment, I'm going to invite Deputy County Administrator Greg Hordell and Director of Pet Resources Scott Trepatalisi to come forward and brief us on last week's confiscation. But, first, for the benefit of our newest members, I want to just briefly highlight some of the items that are covered by our ordinance. It provides for the grandfathering of lawfully operating pet shops at the time of the ordinance adoption. It allows for their relocation, but not expansion. It grants a period of 90 days for existing pet shops to reinstate lapsed federal, state, and local licenses without losing their grandfather provisions. It calls for the annual registering of all pet shops. It lays out the information that must be made available... It lays out the information that must be made available by a retailer to prospective purchases as it pertains to the sourcing of all animals available for sale, including name, location, and USDA license number of the breeder, as well as their contact information. It prohibits a pet shop owner from purchasing animals from a breeder that has a direct USDA violation in the last two years or four indirect violations in the same period. Pet shop operations must ensure that all animals are radio-chipped within five days of its arrival. Details of various record-keeping obligations by pet shops. Any falsification is unlawful and subject to prosecution. Grandfathered pet shops must conspicuously display the promotion of adoption as an alternative to purchase. Purchasers must sign an affidavit attesting their knowledge of an adoption alternative. Pet Resources shall conduct a minimum of two inspections per year of existing pet shops, and retailers must personally inspect any USDA breeding facilities with which they do business. It's very important to point out that all new pet shops must utilize adoption-based business model. Cats and dogs for sale must be from either an animal shelter or from a rescue organization. Financial penalties are established for various infractions ranging from warnings for a max of five hundred per violation. That's largely a synopsis of the Hillsborough County Pet Retail Ordinance that we adopted. The entire ordinance is in our backup. But as you review the document, you'll quickly realize that the preponderance of this regulation is focused on pet shops and their operation. That's because eliminating the sales outlet is essential to addressing the problem. But you'll also pick on, pick up on the absence of any significant effect on commercial breeders, and that's the oversight that I feel strongly needs to be corrected. So this time, I'd like to invite Greg and Scott, if they could come forward. I got a couple of questions and then open it up for any comments you guys want to make. Am I correct that there's still an ongoing investigation with Trish's grooming seizure and that there's a possibility of prosecution?
Scott Trevitowski, Director of Pet Resources. Yes, that, that is true.
Okay. And then, I'm, it's my understanding that we need to be careful about our discussion of this at this point, so as not to inadvertently interfere. Is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Without going into too much detail, was our current ordinance of any help in your efforts?
Yes, it was to a point. We sort of had like a two-prong approach when we were approaching this. One prong was through this ordinance. The other prong was for animal cruelty. And when we saw the best scenario, the best case for us to shut them down, we chose to go the cruelty route, but we didn't abandon the ordinance, but we had better, we had, we had better teeth in the cruelty side, so that's where we proceeded.
Okay. And do you believe that if some changes are made to the ordinance, that it could be of greater assistance in the future?
Yeah, I definitely think there's room for improvement.
Okay, great. Any additional comments that either of you would like to, like to make or point out?
Thanks, Commissioner. Greg Hordell, Deputy County Administrator. I would like to thank you for bringing this forward. It is a pretty critical piece, I think, of an ordinance that we've looked at for a while. We have used it in some circumstances. It's, I think you've accurately characterized it. It hasn't been perhaps as useful as it could be. Scott and his team worked very, very hard on this last case. I'd like to commend him and his staff, specifically Roger Mills, Animal Patrol Officer. They did a terrific job in making sure that they built the case. This took a multi-year effort because of the things that we had to do and the hoops we had to jump through to make sure that we'd have a case that would stick. So anything that we can get that would make our job easier, we would welcome, and thank you for that.
Thanks. Scott, anything else you want to add?
I just wanted to, you know, thank our staff, thank the, the community, everyone who's, who's been, just outpouring for this case has been fantastic as far as people helping where they can. It's gonna take us another thirty or so days, so we keep that going. Shortly, we're gonna be arranging the possibility for volunteers to help us. But again, we want to proceed very cautiously because we don't want to interfere with any potential evidentiary or other issues with the, with the criminal case.
Thank you. Well, I too want to commend you and your staff for great work on this, on this case, and, and haven't seen you in a while, but you look great, like you may have lost a few pounds, so. I'm gonna place a motion on the floor that we direct the county attorney to bring back recommendations to strengthen the Hillsborough County Pet Retail Ordinance, including addressing commercial dog breeding facilities and any other recommendations, such as any permitting changes that was suggested during public comment this morning, and that any recommendations be presented back at our November sixth BOCC meeting.
There's a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you. And Scott, also kudos to you and your team for, you know, so swiftly addressing the issue that's been highlighted. Commissioner Hagan, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this initiative. I fully support your legislative intent. I'm glad that you highlighted that you do not want to adversely impact legitimate breeders. In fact, parts of my district lend themselves well to legitimate breeders in terms of giving animals plenty of, of room to run outdoors and plenty of room to be sheltered properly and things like that. So I, I definitely, in the ordinance, want to see safeguards for those legitimate breeders. But again, I fully support your legislative intent of, of going after these puppy mills.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize.
Thank you, and I echo the same comments. Appreciate Commissioner Hagan. He's always been a leader on the animal issues, and was very thankful he finally got a dog years ago.
Years ago.
Years ago. You still have him?
Yes, and his name is Gator.
Anyway, no, I think it's good, and I, I do want to protect us against any unintended consequences from the good guys out there. And so I really, I think we need to, that, that three hundred animals, that was horrific, just awful. I can't believe somebody would do that to those animals. And I'm glad you went the cruelty route, cause, route, cause I think cruelty was definitely going on there. So, thank you.
Let me thank you also. After I saw that and the work that you all did, I think you probably worked around the clock to, to save some of those dogs. That was a lot of work. I see that you lost some weight. Was that part of it?
I hope so.
But, I mean, that was, that was really a lot of work on your part, and you, to be commended. I know that you don't get a lot of, out of boys, I thank you, because, you know, since we've been here, we've been sometimes on the opposite side of some of the people out there that did not like the way we were going, but Commissioner Hagan has always been working on this up front, and he's, I think he's gonna try to tighten it up a little bit more, and, but the work that you did was tremendous, so thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman. I'm sorry, Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Just briefly, the comments that were made earlier during the, the public comments regarding being in concert with federal law might, might be something to consider as well, just so there's consistency and less misunderstanding by both our good breeders and those that don't know how to follow the rules.
Yes, we'll definitely do that, and I exchanged my card with the gentleman so that we can be sure we get all his ideas.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item F one. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Merrill.
Item B two, Economic Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yak Shapetrovich, Economic Development Department. On August twenty-second, twenty nineteen, Hartford Street Properties LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel, which is located at fifty-three twenty-one Hartford Street, Tampa, as a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately sixty-seven acres and is shown on the projected map. Florida statutes require public announcement of community meeting and two public hearings to designate a brownfield. The proposed community meeting is set to be on October tenth, twenty nineteen, at six P M. At Badger, Daylighting Hydrowac Truck Excavating Services, fifty-three eighty-one Hartford Street, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-one-nine. The two proposed public hearings are set to be on November sixth, twenty nineteen, and December fourth, twenty nineteen, at ten A M. During the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, in the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' boardroom on the second floor of Frederick V. Carl County Center, six-oh-one, East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-oh-two. Staff recommendation is to authorize setting a community meeting and two public hearings as proposed. Staff is also requesting a waiver of the statutory requirement that one of the public hearings be held after five P M. The advertised community meeting will be held at six P M., and the BOCC will be provided with the full transcript of the comments provided at the community meeting. At this time, I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions? Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Regarding this, this project, there's a, a significant amount of tree care, tree cover in that particular area. Are you, can you elaborate to where the brownfield might specifically be, since excavating seems to be the, the course of action?
I think the previous use of this was fertilizer manufacturer, so I think they're still in the process of doing the sampling, and they would enter a, an agreement with the VPC or the Department of Environmental Protection to figure out how best to address the, any contamination that might exist.
Okay, thank you. I was just really curious. There's, tree cover is so rare, and there is some there, so it'd be great to see if there's a way to protect it, so, thank you.
What's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B two. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
B three, Healthcare Services.
Good morning. I'm Chief Early. I'm the Department Director for Healthcare Services. I wanted to request approval for B three, to approve the funding agreement with Suncoast Community Health Centers, Inc., which will allow Suncoast to build and operate a multipurpose healthcare facility for the purposes of providing adult pediatric primary care, dental, laboratory, and diagnostic services on site in Wy Mama area, the clinic. County has identified Wy Mama as a distressed area with a need for increased access to medical care and social services. The county's contribution of up to one million for each of the state fiscal years twenty and twenty-one shall be sent to the Agency for Healthcare Administration, or ACHA, on behalf of Suncoast as an intergovernmental transfer to leverage additional low-income pull funding. On September eighteenth, if you remember, the BOCC approved a transfer of nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars to ACHA as an IGT on behalf of Suncoast for FY twenty. This transfer will come from the county-wide general revenue fund and will be used to satisfy the county's fiscal year twenty funding obligation under the agreement. The agreement requires Suncoast to build and operate the clinic regardless of whether it receives funding from ACHA as a result of the county's IGTs in twenty and twenty-one, and requires Suncoast to execute a U.S. A use restriction on its property to ensure that the site is used exclusively for the clinic. The use restriction will commence on the effective date of the agreement and terminate on the earlier of five years from the date the clinic first becomes fully operational or ten years from the effective date of the agreement, provided that the use restriction is subject to early termination if Suncoast makes a prorated repayment to the county as provided for in the agreement. Funding for this agreement is included in the FY twenty adopted budget within the county-wide general revenue fund. And I'd also like to acknowledge Mike Merrill's assistant, and also, we also have Brad Harriman, C E O for Suncoast, and I just wanted to acknowledge him as well, and to thank everyone involved.
Okay, thank you very much. Excuse me. Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you. I just want to state for the record that to avoid any potential conflict of interest, I'll be abstaining on the item. I've submitted the required form to the clerk. I always like to state for the rec, you all know I'm employed by Suncoast, and I always just like to state for the record that I'm a part-time staff pharmacist over there and not in a decision-making role with the organization.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you, Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you. Do we need Commissioner Hagan back to have a quorum, if you're unable to vote?
Nope.
No? Okay, just a question. I heartily support this item. The need for expanded healthcare options in the rural and distressed communities in this area is an issue that we must continue to address. I especially like the wraparound services that will be offered at this facility, including medical, dental, diagnostic, and social services on the site. In an area that, where we are working very hard to fight human trafficking, I think two things need to be mentioned, that we make sure that the health professionals that work in that community have had human trafficking identification prep, training, just to make sure that there's an opportunity to make sure that those individuals receive the option to, for help. And then, two, the, because many adults, young adults, that might be subject to human trafficking, oftentimes are not eligible for Medicaid, having the county health pair, health program made available to them and make sure they're enrolled will be a critical part of making sure that those individuals receive the healthcare needs that they have. So I'm very excited to see this happen. My only issue with the, the issue is the facility location. I recognize that that may need to be where it is, but this sort of a facility will bring dozens of jobs to an area, but it's located outside of the Wy Mama Village area and downtown. If it were inside, closer to some of the other services, it would assist in our development process and assist in the economic development in the area. Based on my interpretation for the Wy Mama Village Plan, none of these jobs will satisfy the employment requirements we've discussed necessary to expand the residential development. This is a missed opportunity to expand Wy Mama's downtown. So the Village Plan was designed for exactly this kind of development, where residents of Wy Mama could drive into town or even walk into town for their child's checkup and walk over to get ice cream, too, where people can get their blood work done and they can pick up a birthday present next door. We must encourage developers to use these kinds of town plans when planning spectacular facilities such as this, especially when the county is providing funding for this, for this type of project. I recognize timing sometimes matters, but I just want to encourage us to really work very closely with the Wy Mama CDC and the Enterprise Latinas and everyone to see if there's ways when there's such a great opportunity for this to be accomplished in many ways.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let me ask you a question before I move.
Yes, sir.
Hold on a minute. Are there any services out there in the Wy Mama area at this particular point in time that offers?
And I may bring up some other people, but the, the first statement I'll make is that we, we did ask the C E O who's here a couple of questions. One, is it walkable from, for Wy Mama, and it is. They currently have their, their clinic is already operating, but it's a very small clinic. It's already overwhelmed. This one's just down this, you know, down the road, so that's helpful for him. And then we're gonna put social determinants, excuse me, at a later time, we're gonna put the social determinants as part of this, which they would provide, and that would include things like transportation. It'll include things like feeding Tampa Bay's kind of partnerships. It'll include career source. It's gonna be a lot of those things. So I do know that they've already purchased the land. At least that's my understanding. Is that correct? That is correct. So it's, it's really not in that way, but we can mitigate it, and we will work very hard to do that.
But we're meeting a need out there that's just not there, regardless of where it is.
There was no other way to really to do these social determinants and, and actually accommodate the growing population out there and also the indigent population. So this was a very good approach to it, and it allowed us, by the way, to match the dollars through the IGT program, which was a hundred percent match. So there were a number of things that made it really well, and then we made it sure that through the restriction agreements, that they would have to build the clinic and that we would have to get the return on the investment that we were looking for. So all of that together made it a very potentially good thing for Wy Mama, since they had limited resources for anything else in the unincorporated areas.
Before I call on Commissioner Smith, I understand your concern, Commissioner Overman, but they're giving a service out there regardless of where it is that's just not there. As that area out there continues to grow, we're meeting the needs of people out there that just don't have the opportunity to have the healthcare service they need. I've been working with Suncoast for many years and, and know what they do, and worked with them when I was a legislator, and I haven't had the opportunity to work with them in the county commission. So regardless of where it goes out there, it's meeting the needs for the people out there, and then we're providing transportation, I understand, for those who don't have it.
Yes, yes, sir. And then on top of that, just to mention it, we do the, we work, we have two contracts. One of them is with Hispanic Services, so they help us to reach out to that community, and then we have another one that deals with.
And then, we have another one that deals with the, I'm trying to remember them, but another contract that also does with people helping them to enroll and all of those kind of things. And we just added the portal, which is going to even make that better some things.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that up. I think that's a really important point, and I'm sorry to see that missed opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
It really would be perfect if it was contributing to the Wy Mama Village business, economic development, and location. But I didn't see any location in the backup, so I'm really glad that you were able to inform me of that, and just want to highlight that moving forward, that's the kind of thing we should be looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, too, am a huge fan of the Suncoast Community Health Centers. My sister actually worked there for a little bit some time ago, helping to start up their training program. And I've toured the facility in Brandon. I'm, I think our indigent healthcare that we provide in the county is one of the things this county does really, really well, and the Suncoast Health Services extends off of that and provides services to people that are really falling through the cracks. It's so important, and it's really important, I agree, Commissioner Miller, to get this in the vicinity of Wy Mama, however we can do it. So, very supportive, and thanks very much for your work on this.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Yeah. I didn't want to tell you that anything other than super-duper awesome. Okay. No, I'm thrilled to see this program be adopted in that area. Clearly, obviously, it's heavily needed. I just made it, wanted to make aware that where we're working on our economic opportunities to partner, or maybe the Wy Mama Plan District could actually expand because it becomes such a great catalyst for growth in the area. We just want to get it more towards the east.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think it's a very great project, and I'm really glad to see it happen in an area that desperately needs it. So thank you so much for your hard work--
Commissioner Murman--
--and to Suncoast.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I am definitely going to move approval of this item. I think it's, it is really, I have worked with Brad Harrimans for so long. What they have done in Ruskin and just the amount of service they're giving to low-income people cannot go unrecognized today because it is commendable throughout that whole community. Because I remember when they opened that clinic, and there wasn't a whole lot down in Ruskin, and then it really developed. So thank you very much for doing this, and I know we're a partner, but you really took the bull by the horns and went into Wy Mama, and you're taking an operation that just wasn't meeting the needs of the community and really, really putting a business plan together that you could put a full clinic in there. So I do commend you. Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Smith to approve item B3. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero. Commissioner White abstained.
Mr. Merrill.
Two procurement items, B4 and B5.
Good morning. Scott Storm, Procurement Services. Item B4 is asking the board to award and execute an agreement with the overall lowest response responsible bidder, David Nelson Construction Company, in the amount of $38,931.176.40 for the widening of Bell Shoals Road between Bloomingdale Avenue and Boyett Road for the Capital Programs Department. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 8% was established for the project, and the recommended vendor is committed to achieving a higher goal of 8.5%. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman, and Commissioner--
I was going to say--
Overman.
Second, too.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Item B5 is asking the board to approve and execute change order number one to the agreement with Bandi's Construction Company for the addition of several project alternatives associated with the construction of the two new consolidated hardened maintenance facilities, the East and South Service Units, and exercise of the county's direct purchase procedures for the Capital Programs Department. The requested change order is going to increase the agreement, which the board just approved several weeks ago, by $6,224,000, excuse, it's going to increase the agreement by $6,224,239. It will add important features to further enhance and optimize the functionality of each facility. This increase, certain construction alternates were included in the original solicitation, but they weren't awarded at the time. It allowed staff more time to kind of look at, to make sure that it was, that it made sense. After careful review and consideration, staff determined that the alternates were beneficial, and the awarded Bandi's originally offered the lowest overall prices for those items. Additionally, the Capital Programs Department collaborated with the contractor, Bandi's, to identify an additional $820,000 of subcontracting opportunities for disadvantaged business enterprises, which will ultimately increase the participation portion from $7.5 million to about $8.3 million for a total participation goal of 19% for the overall project. Furthermore, addition, in addition, a $40,000 voluntary price reduction was secured by the Capital Programs Department, and change orders also include a total minimum price reduction of another $272,000 by avoiding sales tax by doing direct purchases ourselves. With that, Procurement Services recommends approval.
The motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B5. Let me say this, a 19% disadvantaged minority business goal is extremely high, and that's to be commended on you and our MBE office of doing this. I just want to bring that forward. Thank you very much. All those, I'm sorry. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
If I could just say this, I always have the privilege of staying here and bringing these projects to you, but all of the really hard work and brilliant stuff happens before I ever see it, and then happens after we let it go. So, you know, Capital Programs Department, I mean, it takes a lot of work, I mean, the brilliance that happens there. So I get this little piece in the middle that we deal with, and then I get to bring it up here, so I do appreciate your support, and I know they do, too. So, thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Commissioner Murman's, item F2.
Thank you. I don't see them here.
Sorry about that.
So let's just, we'll do it at the next meeting. I'll just make a motion to direct staff to come back and give us a report on homeless prevention. Is that okay?
Unless you want to wait until we finish the other items and get her down--
Yeah, we could do that. We'll just hold this.
Can you get her?
Yeah.
All right. Then that would take us to Commissioner Smith's, item F3.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Board members, at previous meetings, there have been a few suggestions from board members inviting me to bring back the Guiding Principles document for amendments. So that's what this item is doing. It's a very simple revision to the last sentence of that document, as you see in your backup. The revision I'm suggesting to that sentence keeps our comprehensive plan at the foundation of our planning process and does not introduce the element of sector plans into our planning process at this time. Sector plans are a complex state-legislated procedure that is specifically designed to plan the development of large swaths of rural land. That is what sector plans are for, taking a very large tract of rural land and putting a big new master plan development on it all at a go. If, on the other hand, we want to stop sprawl from paving over the rural areas and start directing growth into transit-oriented development inside the urban core near jobs and services where we can focus our infrastructure investments responsibly, then we have no need for sector plans at this time. We have all the tools we need to plan for future development in the comprehensive plan. Everything that is in the Guiding Principles document can all be done with the tools in the comprehensive plan. If we want to make big plans for large areas in the rural area or the urban area with special protections or special features for place-making, we can do all those things within the comprehensive plan. In fact, we've been doing such things for years. For example, within the comprehensive plan, the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan established a framework for transportation, environmental, and cultural and historical systems for all of South County from Bloomingdale Avenue to the Manatee County line. Community plans are another tool in the comprehensive plan for planning large areas in a detailed way aimed at place-making that expresses community character. And I've asked Melissa Zornita to be here today as the Planning Commission Director, so she can confirm that there is really nothing that sector plans could do for us. Thank you for coming up, just for, very briefly, just to confirm there's nothing that sector plans could do for us that can't be done within the comprehensive plan. And I'd like to ask you, Melissa, as Director of the Planning Commission, does this amendment make sense? And if we stick with the comprehensive plan, are we missing anything that we might need sector plans for in the next, within the horizon of the comprehensive plan to develop inside the urban service area?
Sure. Good morning. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. The comprehensive plan does typically have about a 20-year horizon and would, or has been in the past, as you described, a vehicle to address some of the issues that are in the Guiding Principles document and could be used in that fashion going forward.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted you all to know I'm not crazy and have some backup there from an expert in the field. So my motion is to amend the document, a balanced approach to community building, to revise the last sentence to read, "The comprehensive plan is the vehicle to best ensure a balanced approach to community building."
That's a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Overman and Kemp. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Not yet. Okay. Then we'll take Commissioner White's, item F4.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Commissioners. We all know that there are problems with the RP2 land use category. Citizens don't like, what they see is these developments are built out. Every planner or land use expert that I've talked to dislikes the category as currently written. Even the development community has acknowledged that they don't like certain dated provisions within the RP2 category. That's why at the September 10th land use meeting, I asked that the RP2 land use category, both at the comp plan level and the LDC level, be opened up for potential amendments. While staff is doing this work, I think it's important to have a moratorium on land use applications in the RP2 areas that seek an increase in intensity and/or footprint. I would like to clarify for the record that the effect of the proposed moratorium and declaration of zoning in process would not affect applications that were previously submitted under county review prior to this direction. It would only apply to new application submittals for rezonings and zoning modifications within the RP2 future land use designations. In the interest of full disclosure, I'd like to state that I believe there are situations where if an applicant with existing residential density and commercial square footage requirements are not able to make minor cleanups, such as creating cross-access points, we could actually end up with development being built out with qualities that are not in the best interest of the county. Accordingly, my legislative intent is that, effective today, we have a moratorium on applications that seek any change in residential density, commercial square footage, and/or to change the already entitled footprint of the development. So my motion will reflect that fact. With that being said, I move to direct the county attorney's office to advertise and set a first public hearing for October 16, 2019, at 10:00 a.m., and a second public hearing for November 6, 2019, at 10:00 a.m., declaring zoning in progress and considering the enactment of an ordinance providing for a moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for rezonings and planned development zoning modifications that would increase residential units or non-residential square footage and/or reduce required buffers unless the reduction is to provide for the connectivity to adjacent property or right-of-way within the residential plan to, i.e., RP2, future land use designation of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for a period of 270 days following the effective date of the ordinance. The proposed moratorium will provide for a reasonable time for staff to consider and prepare and for the board to consider and adopt amendments to the residential plan to, i.e., RP2, future land use designation of the comprehensive plan and implementing regulations in Part 5.04.00 of the Land Development Code as previously directed by the board during the September 10th land use meeting.
That's a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Kemp. Before I call on Commissioner Overman, let me ask a question of our legal staff, and I appreciate what you're doing and what you're trying to do, Commissioner White. Is there any legal issues with this particular item?
No, sir. We have reviewed it, and it is provided, moratoriums are in fact provided in Florida law as a land use tool under certain circumstances.
Okay. The second part of it is, you mentioned in your statement, but you didn't include in your motion, that effective today--
I think staff can elaborate on that. I think there's, with the zoning in progress, there's a legal tenet or legal philosophy that would give them direction to stop accepting applications effective today.
There's a body of law, zoning in progress, or sometimes it's called the pending ordinance doctrine, but it is, it would provide for a legitimate legal basis to have the board's direction be effective today.
Even though we're going to have public hearings on this, the final public hearing being in November, am I right? November? Will you start effective today?
Under that doctrine and under those aspects of Florida law, yes, sir.
Okay. Why 270 days?
I did invite Melissa Zornita with the Planning Commission to come. We also have Johanna Lundgren, one of Ms. Beck's staff members, and I believe Adam Gormley is in the audience as well, just to speak to the idea that that's how long they think it'll take to do this work. And my understanding is that this is actually on the low side, but we would rather come in with a shorter timeframe on the moratorium than a longer one because it's, we can always extend it if we need to, if staff is doing their work. But Ms. Zornita, do you have any light to shed on that?
Well, I would simply add that, yes, to get input from the community and then to execute the plan amendment process, which normally takes about six months to get through all the public hearings that are involved in a plan amendment. I think 270 days might be on the conservative side, but it will take at least that long.
Okay. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner White, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's important for us to take the time to revisit our comprehensive plan that was written at a time that it was dealing with environmental factors, logistics factors, transportation, and capacity factors that no longer exist. So having an opportunity to address our code, address our comprehensive plan, and see how that impacts RP2 zoning issues is critical to the success of how we serve our community. I have, I don't know, 4,500 emails in my email box just in the last two days being concerned about the RP2 areas that also include South County. So I appreciate having an opportunity to stop doing the same thing and expecting a different result by stop doing the same thing just for a period of time so that we can address what makes sense for our community and our long-term growth. And I thank you for bringing this forward.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I'd also like to thank you for bringing this forward. And as to the length of the moratoriums, I had just recently read of a moratorium in Osceola County that was eight months long, several others in other areas that were a year long, so that they could deal with the issues that are, we're just being slammed with over and over again. So I appreciate the breadth to take a minute and really be able to look at what we're doing. Obviously, it's not only us that are feeling slammed with our giant bind-- Obviously, it's not only us that are feeling slammed with our giant binders and all kinds of each one leading down 1,000 different paths, but as Commissioner Overman says, just the amount of email and unhappiness. And I can tell you that it's not just the email. When I'm out in South County, as I'm sure that you all, people are, I have said it before, people are just furious and they're saying, "What are you doing? What are you thinking? Why, you know, do you can't do this?" And I had just, I was just picked up from the airport and I guess this is going to make it to the papers now because they're doing a detour from the airport now at night, which takes you across the bridge to St. Pete and back before you can get on 275. But I started talking with the driver and he was, he was talking, it turns out he lives in Riverview, and he was just going, he didn't know I was Commissioner or anything, but we were talking about traffic and all he just said, "The worst traffic ever anywhere was I-75 and Big Ben Road." And he said, "I just can't even believe what's happening there." So it's very much needed. I think we very much need this pause, so thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman and Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero. I'm sorry, excuse me, seven to zero.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And I just wanted to also thank you, Commissioner White, for your work on this. I know that you have led the board also in directing us to look at the RP2 section. And of course, the RP2 land use designation does not include the WVR2 in the Wyomama Village Plan. Wyomama community, when they made their community plan decades ago now, they took the RP2 land use that is within their village area or their community plan area, and they tweaked it a little bit and named it a new land use designation of WVR2. So what we've directed the planning, while we've directed the Planning Commission to study RP2, we're kind of leaving WVR2 out there, and yet these issues are coming from that same area and the issues are the same. They're so similar with similar issues that just, to me, makes sense to look at WVR2 at the same time that we're looking at RP2. And we have directed the Planning Commission to look at the jobs and employment factor within the WVR2. But I would like to make a motion that we direct the Planning Commission to look at the whole thing, WVR2, in the same sense that we're looking at RP2 at the same time because while they're working on RP2, you know, considerations like you mentioned, connectivity, different things may arise, ideas, they'll be talking to the community, they can be looking at this at the same time and possibly just save time and apply the same ideas to the, to the same kind of very, very similar future land use issues district. It's not very much more than the RP2. It's just the RP2 that was within the Wyomama Community Plan. And it just seems sensible to look at both those land use categories broadly and in tandem while we're looking at that one thing in Wyomama anyway and we're looking at everything in the RP2. Let's look at everything in the Wyomama. So I would like to make a motion to direct the Planning Commission staff to commence the study and preparation of amendments to the Wyomama Village Residential 2 Future Land Use Category of the Comprehensive Plan and the Wyomama Village Community Plan and other amendments that may be determined to be advisable. As I said, while we have previously discussed the employment and service requirements within the Wyomama Village Residential 2 category, I would ask for the Planning Commission staff to study and broadly address all recommended amendments in this category.
Second.
That's a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner, Ms. Zornito. Ms. Zornito. This is an unexpected motion I don't think any of us were aware of. Is this going to add time to your study of the one we just passed with Commissioner White?
In my mind, while they would be being done concurrently, I think they're two different studies. I think they're two different stakeholder groups because the Wyomama community has, as you were talking about in your previous agenda item related to the Community Health Center, you know, issues related to how that land use category works with their downtown Wyomama. And so I think I wouldn't want them to be combined into one big study. I think it's too separate.
So this would add another study, an additional 270 days or what?
This is not the motion for moratorium, just studying at the same time.
It's going to take some time.
Yes. Agreed.
So what are you talking about again? Two, 270 days?
Yeah, I mean, I think with proper community engagement and then ultimately having time to do the amendments, you're looking at nine months to a year.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Ms. Zornita, before you go away, so when we talk about the WVR2 category, that would capture that short stretch of 674 that's the downtown area, right? That's all wrapped into the same?
That's technically not in the Wyomama Village category, but it is in the Wyomama Village Community Plan that I believe I wrote down was part of the motion to be looked at.
Okay, you did mention the community plan as well. Good, because I do know that enterprising Latinas is very interested in taking a look at the comp plan as it relates to, the community plan, rather, as it relates to that downtown area on 674.
Yeah. I think those are all, those issues are all related in Wyomama, and that's why it might be a different project.
And I've met with them recently, with some of their board members, and they have some great ideas, by the way, and I think they're really looking for guidance from professionals like from the Planning Commission staff. I think we might have, might be on the calendar for us to go out there and see them maybe, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway, just wanted to put that on the record.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not, I mean, I'm not opposed to this, but I just don't know enough about it. I mean, I feel like this is, it is a big item that is being introduced. Personally, I'd like to, I wish we could have some time to just talk with staff and just get more information on it. It's not that I'm really opposed to, I just don't know enough about it. And I understand doing a study, but studies bring recommendations and studies do, you know, a lot of information back to a community, but I just, and I thought we were trying to eliminate in our process kind of these brand-new, like, big items coming up without really being able to be briefed or get information. I just don't know enough about it. So I, I'm kind of, I'll wait and listen to some other people, but, you know, if there's no harm, no foul, I don't mind, but I guess maybe I'd like to call up Ms. Garces or somebody and just, I mean, from a process standpoint, because this comes back on our development services, it's not, the Planning Commission can do the work, but the actual implementation is going to be on our staff. So can you tell me, like, I mean, what are your thoughts on this and where do we, what should we do?
Commissioners Lucia Garces, Deputy County Administrator for Infrastructure and Development. So there certainly have been a number of issues that have been coming up on Wyomama, whether it was the village, whether it's how much commercial, whether it's the village RP2. I think if you'd like, I just chatted with Melissa, if it would be helpful, she and I can work together on a scope, if that would be helpful, to bring it back to you at the next meeting, and that way we can at least identify what the key components would be, if that would help.
I mean, Commissioner Smith, would you agree to that? So we can at least find out what all the parameters are going to be involved to move forward?
Really, I, and thank you for asking this and raising those points, but I think it's so similar. It's, in fact, when I first read, you know, about the two motions, this one and the one before, I was thinking, oh, good, we're going to settle all that RP2. And I, in my mind, that's WVR2, too, because it's so similar and it's just a couple of pieces of RP2 that were then tweaked into something that included a little difference of the jobs component. We've already directed the Planning Commission staff to look at the jobs component. So my thought is that this is not really a big, anything bigger or more major. In fact, I think it would be saving us time to say, well, while we're looking at RP2, let's consider WVR2 because anything we might do to one, we're probably going to want to do to the other at the same time. They're, you know, it's just kind of a, WVR2 is kind of just a flavor of RP2. So I really just thought, let's, let's ask for the same kind of study and amendments going hand-in-hand while we're at it instead of coming back and doing a whole second one.
Okay, so can I still ask a question? I guess I like the idea of bringing the scope back because I would like to have more information, but I understand you want to just go ahead and move this forward. So can we, can you still bring the scope back to give us more information?
And I think the scope would follow along the lines of the scope for the RP2. We would just look to see if there are any custom items that have to be addressed, especially, I think, in some of the commercial issues because those seem to be the most significant ones that are different. But we can do that as well. We can bring it back.
Let me, let me ask, this is, this is an issue that the motion was made, I think it's bigger than what the motion is saying, that we didn't have an opportunity to look at. Same things you all talked about before. Now here comes a motion that we haven't had an opportunity to look at. Why don't you withdraw your motion, work with staff to put everything in place and bring it back at our October 16th meeting? I think that Commissioner Merman and myself, I would feel more comfortable having information brought to us and we can have the opportunity to review it than bringing the motion forth today and then hoping to bring back some other things on October 6th.
I'm fine with that. I really am. I did not mean to spring anything big on anybody by any means. I really thought this was just a kind of a natural outgrowth and offshoot of what we had just passed, and so I didn't even view it as anything that needs. And as Lucia says, she's still got to do the scoping for the RP2, so I thought scoping for the WVR2 would be the same kind of thing and it would just feed in. I really, I really don't think this is like a whole nother thing, but if there is discomfort on the board and, you know, in light of our recent discussions to bring things, to provide backup ahead of time, I'll withdraw this and make this a commissioner item on the next agenda.
Okay. Motion withdrawn. Thank you very much. Commissioner Overman?
It was in the queue.
Yeah? It was in the queue.
And one of the key differences in your motion versus, which has now been withdrawn, but versus the motion we just addressed, is this isn't necessarily recommending a moratorium. This is actually looking to develop a strategy or a plan in concert with the surrounding areas so that we're not siloing our planning. And since we have a workshop scheduled for the 24th, I'm sure that there'll be an opportunity to have some of what is brought back on the 16th, you know, included in that conversation so that we can actually move forward in a comprehensive way to make sure that the planning that we're doing is addressing the needs of our current county residents and the infrastructure challenges we have wrestled with. So I'm looking forward to seeing you bring that forward and looking forward to discussing it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate that also. I just thought that this was kind of part and parcel of the RP2. I didn't even view it as being, I would have expected, honestly, this discussion to come forward and that we would be dealing with this also. So I appreciate it coming forward. The enterprising Latinas, I think, have kind of probably had most everyone there to talk, and I know it's, it's of great interest for us to continue to look at this entire area, not just the RP2. So I look forward to coming back, and I think it's really important, and I do hope that we move forward on it because I just think it's really critical. Thank you.
The motion has been withdrawn. Mr. Merrow?
Let's see, so that leaves F2. Right.
Commissioner Merman? Audrey?
Thank you. I think she's here. Yeah, Audrey. I really, you know, I've had a couple instances where I've had to call social services about different things that have been happening with homeless people or people about to be homeless. And I, it just came to my mind that Audrey and her staff are doing just unbelievable work to really prevent homelessness, and that's, that's a big charge. That's a big thing for somebody to do. And I thought it would just be worth it for all of us to have that information because we get calls in our offices, and I think it'd be great for you to help tell the public and tell us exactly all the great things you're doing.
Thank you. Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department. Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Overman and I recently had a very similar discussion, so thank you for the opportunity to do so. Will I be doing that today or at a later date? You ready for it now?
Yeah, if you're ready.
I actually have a handout. If I could pass this around? I had a feeling you were going to ask me for today. Okay. So the Social Services Department provides homeless prevention assistance, short-term stabilization support to vulnerable low-income residents by preventing immediate eviction. In addition, households that are experiencing an immediate crisis such as a flood or a fire and they're vacated or they're determined uninhabitable by code enforcement, we also provide relocation assistance. So that involves us paying their security deposit and up to two months of their rent and their utility bills. The criteria for this assistance is 150% of the federal poverty guidelines or below, which is basically a family with one or two parents making, earning minimum wage. We do prioritize access to these services to vulnerable populations, so the households have to have either a child in the home, an elderly person or someone disabled. They have to be facing eviction or have the vacate order. The landlords have to be compliant with code enforcement to have the inspection so we ensure the properties are safe. And income-based households or, or properties that already offer some sort of discount or Section 8 or HUD, we do not extend services to those because they're already in a program which provides assistance to them to reduce their obligations. So we really do make sure that folks that can't have access to affordable housing are prioritized first. How they apply is they contact our Customer Care Plus line. We receive over 4,500 calls any month asking for this assistance. Some are not eligible, but we're able to screen them. Our phone calls last anywhere from nine to 11 minutes, so it's a lengthy discussion to find out if they're eligible and to let them know what information they have to bring for their appointment. So when they arrive at the Community Resource Center, it's set up very much like a doctor's appointment that you and I would go to. They log into the kiosk, they find their name for their appointment, and they have a seat, and it's very transactional. One of the reasons that it's transactional is because we know that they're very low-income and they're in crisis and they're facing eviction. I mentioned our poverty guidelines are 150% of the FPG or lower, but we know that almost 60% of our customers accessing these services are at 75% of the federal poverty guideline. So for households... So for a household of one, that would mean that their income is about $9,000 a year, and they're looking at rent of about $1,000 a month. Services are provided at all of our five community resource centers, which you all are all familiar with. The budget, the Character 80 budget for this service is about 1.6 million. 300,000 of those dollars are set aside for the ASO program through the Children's Board, and the nonprofits that participate in the ASO have access to those, to those dollars directly. So as they develop case plans for people working towards self-sufficiency or other goals, education goals, employment goals, maybe some mental health counseling, substance abuse counseling, and those households all have children in them, they're able to provide the homeless prevention assistance and keep those case plans going without referring them to the county. And I want to highlight that the Children's Board does that without charging us an admin fee at all. So all $300,000 of that goes directly to direct client services. Some of the statistics I provided at the bottom are by districts. You can see a breakdown of where those funds are distributed. I mentioned from October 1st to September 30th, last fiscal year, we assisted 1,600, about 1,600 households, and about 322 additional households were assisted by the Children's Board.
Okay.
Thank you. That was, that was great.
I talk fast, I'm sorry.
She does, she does. She's a, just a great team member here at the county, and I know she works really hard with Felicia and her staff as well as Antoinette. But, you know, I had an instance, I think it was last week, where somebody notified me about a woman who was picked up at a Wawa. I think I talked to you about that. I had three kids, and she was crying on a bench, and somebody, it's actually somebody that works for St. Vincent de Paul, asked her what was wrong, and she said, "I'm homeless." And here she had these three kids, eight, two, and like, under one, and, you know, called Audrey, and, you know, they're gone to, went to the Neighborhood Service Center and, to get assistance so that they could. And I think that's the great thing that you do, is you provide that short-term rental assistance to really help people get back on their feet for a short time and really, either if they're looking for a job or whatever they're doing, that they're able to do that. So it's a great thing we do, as you know, social services for the listening public, you have to provide for the whole county. That was a little gift we got from the city way, way, way back. And, but you do a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that support. I know with the lack of affordable housing, the increase in funding for that will definitely assist us, and maybe we can start dedicating some of these funds to other initiatives such as reunification for parents that are, you're trying to, you know, have stable housing to get their kids back. Rameen and I talk a lot about different opportunities, preventative opportunities that we can, you know, utilize these dollars a little bit better once we have some affordable housing.
Right. That's great. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Audrey, thank you very much for your report. As Commissioner Merman mentioned, there's a, there is a, and you're, and you're also in your report, there's a, there's a correlation on a bunch of things I'm working on when it comes to not only affordable housing, but also our children that are aging out of foster care, as well as those children and adults that have been, found themselves as victims of human trafficking, that are looking to try and get back on their feet after they've had nothing to work with. So the, the resources that your department bring to people in Hillsborough County is, you know, the definition of hope. It's that bridge of helping people get through. And while we have to work even harder to try and bring you the resources you need to help people get stable housing, without stable housing, everything else in people's world falls apart. As you, as you mentioned, Commissioner Merman, with a woman with three children, how in the world does a child learn when they don't have a safe place to live? How does a mother actually be able to look for a job if she doesn't have a safe place to keep her kids, a man or a woman? And so the bringing, the ability to build that bridge towards home security is where I am in trying to create opportunities with the, all of the efforts that we're doing in the affordable housing area to, but that takes time. And so I really appreciate the emergency services you provide and the bridge that you provide, and the Hillsborough County citizens are served well by your department, and it's critical that we do everything we can to find the funding to help people get in their, on their feet. So thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you. I agree. Not only the work, I do agree on the services needed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrill.
Thanks, Audrey. That concludes all of your regular items and just leaves any future discussion items.
I have a, is anyone here from affordable housing?
No one? No, it doesn't look like it.
Okay. I was going to ask a question concerning the $10 million that we gave Affordable Housing with the creation of, not the creation, but the modification of the Affordable Housing Task Force. What, what exactly are we going to be doing with those $10 million that we created at trust fund? What exactly areas are we going to be looking at in that, in that area? Is anyone, now, no one's here to answer that question, but I'd like to have something brought back to us at our October 16th meeting concerning what areas we're looking at with those Affordable Housing dollars, where is it going to go? Are we also looking at workforce housing and how this new committee is going to come into play with the whole structure of that? So if we can bring that back, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, Cheryl brought back some preliminary recommendations on how to use the $10 million, and she's going to present that to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, I believe, for, for their input, and then that'll come back to the board. Is that correct?
Yes. If I may, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board has been restructured. We will have a full board, hopefully, by November, by the, and so at the December meeting, in addition to oriented, not only the new board members, but, but to establish a calendar and a process for addressing housing policy that would involve also the $10 million allocation each year. We don't currently have a full board. We've, we're waiting on appointments from the Housing Finance Authority. We do have an appointment from HART, which this board has to approve, all of these appointments. Plant City has yet to make their appointment as of yet. So the goal here is to not only work with previous plans that we had in place, but also to make sure that we're using these monies as best as possible in accordance to the board's guidance. So that, that is part of our process in getting started. Cheryl, Ms. Howell is actually out sick today, so I don't anticipate that she'll be able to get that to us at the next board meeting, but I know that it is on the agenda to approve the new board members for the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, whose goal is to establish housing policy and how we use those resources in an effective way.
Okay, but she, you're, they could have something back to us at the next meeting. Am I correct? So you got to wait till your board is fully appointed and then wait for them to look at it and bring it back in December?
I would anticipate that it's, would be better, we would be better served if the whole board had an opportunity to address the priorities on how those monies are spent.
So again, when will you think that will be done?
Assuming I have a full board by December. I mean, unfortunately, we have boards that are, have to appoint people. We don't have a meeting in November, and our next meeting is in December.
I, I don't think we can wait to December until you get a full board to determine where those dollars are going to be spent. I think that even though you don't have a full board, that you all can come up with some plan that could be brought back to us in the very near future. So instead of November 16th, why don't we say bringing it back at our first meeting in, I'm sorry, October 16th, bring it back at our first meeting in November? We won't have but one meeting in November, which is November 2nd, I believe. The next one will be into December. So I'd like to have, this board needs to have something that we can look at before December. So that's why I'm saying, even though you all have a full board, you have a board that you're going to be meeting. You only have two or three?
We only meet bi-monthly this year. We will be meeting monthly in 2020, assuming the board approves that schedule, which I don't have a board to approve that schedule as of yet. Our bylaws are multi-year old, and, but I do know that Ms. Howell does have a plan for the $10 million, and she can bring that forward. I, I don't know that it's been adopted by the board at this point.
Okay. Well, can she bring it to us before, at, at our first meeting in November? That's my, that's my request.
She can bring it next, next meeting, your October meeting. Because she is, she's already presented in a, in a staff report, so it's prepared, and we can bring it back October 16th.
16. Okay, that'll be fine.
And then that can segue into your advisory board, I guess.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just will make a comment. I totally agree. Actually, this is why I brought up the item about the TDC. This board is to be held accountable for how that money is to be spent. I know you have a great board, and I think they'll do a great job, but we need to see how that spending is first, not second. And what we, what Cheryl gives us should go to your board, and much like I wanted to do with the TDC. So it's just my comment. There is a Think Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Day event today, so I hope you all will come. It starts at 2:00 over in Chalora Park. That's it.
Any other future items? Any other future items? Take note that it is now 11:22, and we are done.
Amazing.
Amazing. Good journey.